Good evening. I'd like to call the September 29, 2005 Borough Council Meeting to order. Will a clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 specifying the time, date, and location of this meeting by posting a copy of the notice at the municipal building, on the municipal website, and providing a copy of the annual notice schedule to the official newspapers of the borough. Notice is also on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Here.
Councilman Collins?
Here.
Councilman Menko?
Here.
Councilman Posnansky?
Here.
Councilwoman Payne?
Here.
Councilman Potter?
Here.
Mayor Murray?
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignola?
Present.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskonka?
Present.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr?
Present.
Borough Clerk is present as well.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence for the passing of Milltown's Deputy Chief, Anthony Korbencheck, who passed away on Thursday, then followed by a salute to the flag. First, we're gonna have a presentation for Silver Award Project for the Girl Scouts. Would they please come up?
So, hi. So, this is our Softball Rocks Donation Box.
Wait, what's your names?
My name's Annabelle.
And I'm Isabella.
And what are you going for it?
This is our Girl Scout Troop Silver Award Project, and we're asking for approval. So, this is our Softball Rocks Donation Box.
I'm Isabella Wise. I'm in eighth grade, and I'm a part of NJHS at Joyce Kilmer School. I enjoy playing softball, specifically third base, and I play for the North Brunswick Raiders.
My name is Annabelle Abrams, and I'm an eighth grade student at Joyce Kilmer School. I'm a member of the NJHS and a softball player for the Milltown Royals. We were both a part of the Milltown Little League for many years.
What is our project? The Softball Rocks Donation Box is a box for used and donated softball equipment. The purpose of the box is to give girls who don't have the equipment the chance to play. Many girls want to try softball but don't have the money or simply don't want to spend the money on us before they decide they really like the sport.
Why did we choose this project? We chose this project because it is something that is important to us. Both of us enjoy playing softball, and we would like to share those meaningful experiences with young girls. Choosing this project gives us the power to show so many young girls that it is good to try something new, and that if you try hard enough, you can achieve anything.
The box. The box will be located in Gloria Bradford Park next to the Blue Shed at the back of Field Two. To access the box/equipment, you must go to the snack shack and ask for the key. There will also be a sign-out sheet at the snack shack that asks for a name, the equipment you took, and the date it was borrowed and returned.
The insides and out. The box will be a plastic storage container with the shelves inserted in it to hold the equipment. We will also supply a bat rack for all different sized bats with a description of what size bat should be used for girls of different ages. If we get baseball donations, we will have another small section for those.
What else is involved in our project? In addition to the equipment box, we will also host three days of softball clinics to raise interest in softball. These beginner clinics will take place at the fields at Gloria Bradford Park. Sessions will take place multiple times a day and be about an hour long. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your consideration.
Does any member of council have any questions?
I just had one about whether the Public Works could do some make sure there's pest control and, you know, insect control over there. That's what I'm worried about. Maybe Councilman Posnansky could talk to Ralph about that.
And I've just had just two quick things. First of all, thank you so much. I was actually on the board for the Little League in girls softball, and I think it's a tremendous thing you guys are doing. First, you're also gonna work closely with the Little League with your clinics, right? Perfect. And second, I have some equipment I'll be more than happy to donate. So, I've been looking for a place, and now I have it. So, thank you so much. Perfect.
Thank you.
Great program. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have Assemblyman Robert Karabincheck and Assemblyman Shirley Stanley. If you would please come up, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here. We come here tonight to actually celebrate the fact that Milltown has come into our district for the second year. So, you know, when we heard Milltown was transitioning during the redistricting, it's gonna come into our district now. So, we were excited for the fact that, you know, we've known you all, we've worked with you in many different aspects, and it's a pleasure to be here to represent Milltown. And I hope to continue, both of us hope to continue, keep representing you in the years ahead. We have been working tirelessly for you on your behalf, and my running mate, Simon Karabincheck, is gonna sit and explain to you everything that we've done for you in the last two years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for taking a few minutes and listening to us. But the most important things that we've done for Milltown and all of the constituents of Milltown is we got $200,000 for the fire department, which is great for the first responders who respond to the needs of the people when there's an emergency. That is nothing more or better than you can do for a person when they're in need, and that's something that's gonna help everybody. And the biggest one is a million dollars coming to Milltown to help with the water infrastructure pipes and the lead lines and all of that for everyone here, again, for Milltown. This is something that Assemblyman Stanley and myself fought for during this budget, and we brought it home for you and everybody here in Milltown. So, please use it, enjoy it, and have everybody safe, and thank you so much for giving us the time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Take care. Thank you, gentlemen. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is the public portion is limited to the comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit as set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close audience comments. Ordinance Public Hearing, Second Reading. The following ordinance was introduced on September 8, 2025.
Excuse me, Mayor? Minutes?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like, can we do it one shot or separate?
Well, to the extent that you have, if everybody had been present for every one of those meetings, I'd say okay, but you've got people who are gonna need to abstain, so why don't we do them individually?
Okay. May I have a motion to approve minutes from July 21, 2025, regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any comments? May we have a roll call, please?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For the rec, I think Councilman Menko, I think you were absent on the meeting of the 21st?
21st, okay.
Yeah, so if we could just change your "aye" to an "abstained"?
I abstain.
Perfect, thanks.
I'm trying to remember what date that was on. It might be two.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for August 18, 2025, regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any comments? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
I abstain. I was not present.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second, for August 20, August 18, 2025, executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Abstain.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion also carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the September 8, 2025, regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second, please, for the September 8, 2025, executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion also carries.
All right. Back on track. Now is the time for ordinance public hearing, Second Reading. The following ordinance was introduced on September 8, 2025, published in accordance with the law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after reading. Will a clerk please read Ordinance 251572 by title?
An ordinance to fix and amend salaries for Milltown Borough employees to include police captain.
May I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambranah, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any, wanna open up to public comment? Seeing none, unclosed public comment. Is there any borough council comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ordinance Public Hearing, Second Reading. The following ordinance was introduced on September 8, 2025, and published in accordance with the law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after reading. Will a clerk please read Ordinance 251573 by title?
An ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan entitled Ford Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
May I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambranah, seconded by Councilman Potter. I'll now open up the public hearing on Ordinance 251573. Please state your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to the comments only on this ordinance only. If you, if someone raises their hand, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close audience comments. Is there any council comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was looking in here, and it says they can go up to 350 residential units, and it doesn't say the amount of stories the buildings can go up. Does anybody know about that?
I believe Mr. Barry is here who might be able to provide some insight into those, that information. Councilman.
Thanks, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. John Barry here as a borough planner. Councilman Collins, there are bulk regulations in the plan, starting on page 17, that include the permitted height for different types of buildings. So, up to five stories for the mid-rise apartment or a mixed-use building, then up to four stories for the stacked townhouses, and three and a half stories for the standard traditional townhouses.
Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome. I have a question. The five stories, when was that determined? How many, recent years ago?
The last amendment to the plan that was adopted in 2022 included five stories as the maximum building height. So, that's carried forward in this version.
But there'll be one building?
That's, the concept plan that we have attached, which we expect the development to be substantially consistent with, includes one five-story building.
Okay. Would you know the nearness to Main Street? That it would, and it could be yards, but would you have an idea?
So, the setback is permitted to be, I believe it's 10 feet to Main Street. You know, it's just a little, little section of Main Street there that the property has frontage on before you get to the bridge. The idea would be that we have some presence there on Main Street for a mixed-use building with commercial space on the ground floor.
And it runs consistent with the road? It won't be on an angle? It would be consistent with Main Street?
That's something we'll have to iron out, the final details, but I think that's a good recommendation when they come, when a developer eventually comes in for site plan approval at the planning board, that's something we want to look at, make sure that the sidewalks have adequate width, all of those different design items.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. This is for Mr. Vignola. I see the amount is for 25, 650. Is, and that accounts for the, from the original number, it's minus 1.25 million. Is that for?
The numbers have to do with condemnation award, but they don't really have an effect on the plan. Those are just things that are part of?
No, it's not that. I don't have a question about that, but I know that the agency at some point wanted, if I'm correct, 6.6 million. So, there were two sides to the numbers they saw as far as the cleanup.
The cleanup hasn't been established yet, so the cleanup is currently something that'll be dealt with as part of a separate hearing before the court determining what an escrow will be for the cleanup out of the condemnation award. The condemnation award doesn't take into account the condition of the property.
Okay. Well, the 6.6 million that I believe came from the person, the expert for the agency, do you know how he came up with that number? Because I know it changed to the 1.25.
I don't know with the 1.25. I don't know where your numbers are coming from, Councilman.
Well, I've read them in a court document.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, right now, we're dealing with the plan for the development of the site, not the condemnation award.
I understand.
So, I can get answers to you for that, but really, that's not germane to what we're doing this evening. This evening's about the plan itself, not about the value of the property and any other offsets there might be.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
I just had a question, Peter, about condemnation. Suppose it's 10 million today, and he goes to court, and they tell him it's 20 million. Who picks up the 10 million difference? The builder or the town?
It's really, right now, Councilman Collins, we're not talking about the condemnation award. We're talking about the plan itself and what can be developed on the site. So, there are...
Not relevant at this time.
It's really not relevant, and frankly, to the extent it's still pending litigation, it's not something we generally will talk about in an open meeting.
Okay.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. The following ordinance was introduced on September 8, 2025, and published in accordance with the law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after reading. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 251574 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 6 Alcoholic Beverage Control, Section 6-3 Licenses, Subsection 6-3.4 Entitled Classes and Maximum Number of Licenses/L license Fees, and Chapter 15 Building and Housing, Section 2 Administrative Fees for all Subcodes, Subsection 15-2.1 Entitled Certificates of Occupancy and Approval, and Chapter 25, Section 4 Water Rates and Meter Charges, Subsection 25-4.2 Entitled Tap Fees and Meter Charges of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambranah, seconded by Councilman Collins. Is there any comments from the public? All right, unclosed public comment. Is there any comments from council?
I'm here to discuss the board's orders, but I don't know whether this is the appropriate time.
Nope.
Or again.
Yeah, yeah. Little bit. Is there any comments from council? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing of payment of municipal obligations. Will clerk please read Resolution 2025309 by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $2,782,955.76.
May I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Council President Zambranah. Is there any comments or questions?
Yes. I have a few. I'll start with the one, I know that this is standard, the COA housing, and I see the fee of 3875. Do we have any oversight? I don't know if Mr. Vignola wants to answer that, or whoever would want to answer that. Because the taxpayers do pay this. Do we have any oversight? Are we, does someone from the construction office get to see what's going on on the site? Do we, do we see the?
I don't, to tell you the truth, Councilman Posnansky, I don't scrutinize the bill list because...
Oh, no, it's okay.
So, you're talking about the fee paid to, what, CGPH for, is it?
Work, because...
Which number bill are we talking? COA? You're talking about Community Grants and Planning on page three?
309. It's for, it's for page three, 25, 1828, and 1841. I understand that it has to be paid, and that's not my complaint. My feeling is that since we are paying this, and if it comes up every month at 3875, that's almost $40,000 for a year, and since the taxpayers are responsible, I think that, whether it's true or not, that there should be some oversight from the town.
So, that oversight comes from my office? My office approves those improvement projects submitted by CGVNH through the borough as part of our...
Does someone inspect to make sure that either the work is needed or the work is done?
Yes, sir. The firm that we hired, Community Grants and Planning, is our representative, if you will, in the COA line of rehabbing our, so we hired them to do that. They process the applications from the resident.
Okay.
The resident has to provide documentation and why they meet certain COA guidelines or income guidelines.
Okay.
Which authorizes the work to be done. Community Grants and Planning submits the application on behalf of the resident.
Okay.
That, those, and that information or that improvement, if you will, be it fixing the roof, or plumbing, or whatever the need of that low-income person is, has gone through CGVNH, excuse me, Community Grants and Planning, there's a load of paperwork on each one of those improvements, sir. And then they expect it to make sure it's done correctly, and they ensure that the contractor is licensed by the state of New Jersey, and that he has all his paperwork, and he does the work correctly.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you clearing that up, because I know that we're responsible, and I just didn't know how deep that we would go into it, and I appreciate you telling me that.
We know, so we are very deep.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Each one of those applications is absolutely maintained and managed by my office.
Okay. A couple others. The, well, I'll ask a question. Supply Clooney, I know that they don't really have much to do here anymore. Do you know how long they'll still be here? Because I know that, I think it's less than $1,000 what we paid them for the past month.
Yes, sir. So, their presence in Borough Hall is as an auditor, is not as the auditor. They do bank reconciliations, so we have probably 25 different bank accounts in the borough.
Okay.
And Michelle Swisher is the one who does this. She comes in, she sits in either, you know, the old planning board office, and she goes through those bank reconciliations every month to make sure that the money that clears the bank is tied into Edmunds.
Okay.
And then what I will get, sometimes often, and sometimes we're lucky and we've done everything cleanly, I'll get an Excel spreadsheet from Michelle that says, transfer, you know, $98.07 from the tax collector's end, to, you know, because we haven't entered it, you know, there's a bill we paid on the bill list, but we didn't make that same change in the many bank accounts we have. So, I'll get this big long sheet, we move the money back and forth so that Edmunds matches up to the bank reconcili, the bank wrecks, right, and that's what Michelle does.
So, she's, and I understand, so she's an expert in that. Is that a position that would be beneficial to keep her, even though you have a new person coming in? Would it be beneficial to keep that? Because she doesn't...
No, I would not dump this off. When was the last time you balanced your checkbook? Don't answer that question. I will tell you that I have one checkbook, and that's more than enough. For me, Fred Carr, I would not want to do 25 on a $14 million budget, okay? I'm having enough time with just one from the Pentagon Federal Credit Union, and I don't write that many checks. We write 150 a month. So, she does a very good job. Now, Joe Zanga does it in South River, but he has a time, and he's also been there 20 years. There's not a check that goes through that he hasn't seen already. We, this is a good set of, second set of eyes on our money.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, if she's the right person to be there, even though we're paying, going through Supply Clooney, I don't need to ask that question if they're gonna still be here, if she's that beneficial to us.
She is very beneficial, sir.
Okay, thank you.
No more questions, thank you.
Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the less resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items that may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated on as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Resolution 2025-3-11 and 2025-324.
Is that it?
Anybody else? Anybody else, how many?
So you have 311 and 324?
That's correct.
Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution?
Approval of consent agenda for the September 29th, 2025 Borough Council meeting. Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions. Whereas each of the following resolutions presented before the Borough Council at its September 29th, 2025 regular meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council. Now, it would be resolutions, oops, I'm sorry. 310, 312 to 323, and 325 and 326. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council, with the same legal effect as though each was read in its entirety at the September 29th, 2025 regular meeting, and adopted by separate vote.
Excellent. Will the clerk please, I'm sorry, may I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambranah. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, ma'am.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-311 by title?
Authorizing the award of a required disclosure contract with Duke's Root Control.
With pleasure, council.
Make the motion this resolution be adopted.
Second. Have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering what this root control is for. Is this water and sewer? Is there one street, or is it a couple streets, or...
Sir, it's a preventive maintenance in the wastewater collection system. Not just a street, the system itself.
More than one street?
Yes, sir, the town itself. And the reason that we need the resolution is because their services exceed the pay-to-play limit of 17.5. And because they've exceeded the 17.5 pay-to-play limit, we have to have a resolution.
I see.
Now you'll see that the cost is $23,000, which is below the bid limit, or bid threshold. Bid threshold requires us to go out for a formal bid. We can do quotes under the bid threshold, under the guidelines of the QPA and the town, and these guys are the ones we are going to use. But again, we've hit that magic pay-to-play number, and here we are.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-324 by title?
Authorizing application for a grant to replace lead service lines.
You have heard the reading of this resolution, I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering how the residents are going to be signed up for this program, to get on the list. I assume Beth has it, is that correct?
So I can answer that question right now? Okay. This resolution supports the money that they already talked about right there.
Right.
The money was about a month, month and a half ago, I received notice that the Borough had received the million-dollar grant that's in the state budgets, in the budget. Now DCA has required us to apply for the money that we already have. So I went online with the mayor, and we're going to go to Greensage and say, yes, we think this is a lovely idea.
So wait a minute.
That's the short answer. So we've already got the money.
We have to apply for the money we already got?
Welcome to New Jersey, sir. What's your name? What is your, what is your next question? So...
I'm still trying to digest that one, Fred.
Yes, sir. So DCA will administer the money, like the water, like the water grants, same thing.
Right.
It'll all be in the DCA system, we'll go out and do whatever we do, and then eventually we'll have to upload thousands of pages of paperwork to prove that we spent the money correctly, and we followed the rules, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is part of that process.
Right.
The mayor wrote a letter of endorsement, he's going to upload it, lovely. The council president needs a letter of endorsement for this resolution, which suffices for the council, you know, approving or agreeing that we want to do this. Now, next step in the process.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the residents, how are they going to get this?
Somewhere down the line, not this year, when we have completed the water meter replacement project and the lead service line identification project, we have a long list of specific addresses that require the replacement of the lead line. That lead line service goes from the person's house to the street, okay? Because we're responsible to go to the connection to the main, okay? This million dollars and probably some more money will be thrown into the cauldron of spending, if you will, where along with CME and VPO, we will go out and identify each individual's house and bid the replacement of that water line replacement. We, you guys, not me, will have to decide how you want to do it. Now, a million dollars only goes so far.
Yes, it does.
That's correct.
So if you have, let's do some basic math. If you have 50 houses at 20 grand a pop, okay, you can replace 20 meters. Now, the last two we did, in the bill list, we spent about 30 for two homes. So if you interpolate that, for all you people who took algebra, you're about $500,000 short. Once I invite Lou and the boys to get involved, you know, they gotta, they gotta take their cut, it's a house cut, it's like Vegas, okay? To come up with the bid documents, to do this correctly, so that when we replace the lines, we follow the law. And then we go out for bid, then we replace the line, and then the council decides, how do we do it? How do we pay for it? Do we then say, every resident on the list, we're going to front them a piece of the gate, like we'll give you 15K, but you have to come up with the other 5K out of pocket? Because that's the way it is right now, is that the homeowner is responsible for the lead service lines. So the council can decide how they want to do it. Do I say, look, I'm going to take this million dollars, and I'm going to take it from the main to the corporation stop or the curb box, and you, the homeowner, takes it the rest of the way, because it's your responsibility? Or do we, you know, eat it all? Use the million dollars and more Borough money to replace it all ourselves? But whatever you do, however you do it, whatever you decide, okay, gotta have it done by 2031.
2031.
2031. So you've got, so I would say, from my experience in the last two years, please don't spend the next six years thinking about it.
But I think in one of our ordinances on the issue is at 2027. 2031 is the, when the state, but we put in there 2027 is when we want Milltown...
We like to be done early, correct.
That's exactly.
But, but we don't, we're not going to fine ourselves. But we don't need the state helping us, coming down and inspecting us, and the requirements, councilmen, are insane from the state's perspective. Our water meter replacement project is way ahead of the requirement. We have pictures of all the lines, we have pictures of the meters, we have pictures of the problem, so we can tell the state, yes, this is why we think that this is a lead line. Look, here's a photo. There's a magnet sticking on it, it must be galvanized, okay? So you're got, you're years away before you're done, but it's going to, this is a good start to figure out how you're going to pay for it.
And which may mean that there'll be another ask?
Correct.
To our assemblyman.
Yes, I, so based on our current project, I put in the grant application that we have about a million dollars of grant, and that we're going to use about $500,000 of our own money, we're going to bond for it. That's a swag, you gotta put the blank, the application requires you to put something in the blank, okay? So you can always amend it later, and if we don't use our own money, and we can spend just the, if we get another ask, and we can spend only the state's money, then we don't need it. We amend the application and say, we didn't use our own money, we got $2 million of state money, and we spent it all, and thank you very much. It's just paper, councilmen, you just get on there and you change it, and they say, okay, fine. Same way with our current project. Eventually, when we finish the water meter project, and we've submitted all the document to the $2 million project, $2 million grant, there'll be money left over. Easy opportunity to go to DCA and say, I've got X amount of money, I'd like to segue that money over to the lead line service project, or I want to replace the water main under the turnpike, or some other water project in the town.
Yep.
Lou, I'll hear if we're publicly embarrassed. How many, how many lead services do we have in Milltown? How many galvanized do we have estimated to have to be done?
So to date, we've identified 65 lead and one galvanized.
65 lead. Okay, thank you.
And the state treats galvanized the same as lead.
Yeah, I hear that. I don't know why, but I guess...
Because the lead in the, lead in the water lines bonds to galvanized steel, and so subsequently they consider it the same.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks, Ray.
I disagree, but on that, you...
Lou, have the residents that, have they been notified, those 65 people?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Listened, yes.
Fred, how many, how many do we still have to replace?
224.
So there could be more.
Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, we have reports from elected officials. Council President Zambranah?
We have reports from professionals, ma'am.
Professional Peter Vignol?
Mr. Mayor, nothing this evening, other than the fact that I'm going to need to ask the board, the council, to consider a resolution for executive session prior to adjournment this evening. There's a matter impending litigation that I'd like to discuss with you in closed session. So if you were amenable to that, I had asked the clerk to prepare that resolution and have it ready in the event the council were amenable to that request.
For tonight, Tab?
For tonight.
So you need a motion?
When we get to that portion of the meeting, right before adjournment, we can, we can adopt that resolution.
Okay.
As long as you guys want to do it.
For engineer?
No reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carr?
I've spoken enough, Mayor.
Ms. McCarthy?
Just a reminder to Borough voters that the Borough Dropbox has been opened out here. So if you have received your vote by mail ballot, you are welcome to drop it in this Dropbox here. You can go to Kennedy Boulevard, 26B Kennedy Boulevard, there's a similar box, but this one may be more convenient. It is open and ready for your voting pleasure.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council?
Yes, I do. This is in regards to the last meeting. I bring up the subject of the change of our agenda that was unanimously passed into law by Resolution 2025-22. There was a spirited discussion regarding the reason for the change, to shorten the council meetings, the value of the Constitution and its Bill of Rights, and it issued here the First Amendment, especially regarding free speech. It's one of the natural rights that James Madison and the framers believed were to be protected. It has been said here that we do not always follow Roberts' rules, and here's what I know, we do follow Roberts' rules. Voted in, it is incorporated into our bylaws, thus becoming law, just as the Constitution is law. My pursuit is the freedom of speech, justice, and the rule of law for myself, those I sit with up here, and those that will follow us, and also for the residents. To those that say this, this is not an abridging the freedom of speech issue, I'll ask you to look up abridging. To abridge something means to diminish, to reduce, curtail its scope, duration, or authority. And freedom of speech is the right to share ideas, express oneself. This protection extends all forms of expression and their content. This means government cannot ban free speech because it dislikes the message or the ideas behind it. Now, on usurping law, a resolution passed into law is to be upheld. An attempt to override, seize authority over it, its legal right, would be considered preemption, which can have consequences. And I bring this up tonight because even with proof of validity of an enacted law, it was being ignored and disrespected. Those loudly saying, if you do not like the new agenda, let's take a vote. I do not have trust in those that expect me to fall in line with opinions over facts. And I'm going to quote Daniel Patrick Mornihan, "You're entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts."
Anything else? I actually have a couple. So I know this was on the Borough, on the bulletin board for quite a while. This was actually the home, an additional home repair, home improvement program that was on the bulletin board. So this is actually another program that the Borough's behind in sponsoring the support of this. So that's just another avenue for homeowners to try to make improvements to their home that are eligible, that. I was also notified from the prosecutor's office for a fraud alert for a jury duty scam. So just be careful if you've been recently reported within Middlesex County residents receiving phone calls from someone impersonating Middlesex County Sheriff's Officer for a jury duty scam. So just be mindful of that. Typically, you'll get your green card in the mail, like the rest of us. Next, I was contacted by a couple residents about the letter that went out for the water meter, how to schedule your water meter replacement appointment. The only problem is they tried to go on the QR code, and they called the number, and they said there's no available appointment. So I actually asked Mr. Poskanka if he can try to investigate that to see what occurred there, something, must have been a glitch or something that occurred there. So I just made Lou aware of that. Yep. All right. Try to be brief. Last meeting, I discussed about the establishing of the South Main Street, or not South Main Street, but the Firehouse Subcommittee, and it still wasn't put on the agenda. So I would ask the council for consideration or a motion in a second to, so this could be created, because this was since February 13th that the request has been in there. So this is something that I think we should be moving forward. The South Main Street rehabilitation improvement project has been stagnant, so I just want to see this move along, because this has spent quite some time with no movement on it. So would any council member like to put this on as a motion or a second?
I'd make a motion for you.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, what are you asking for, a motion to place a resolution on the agenda for next meeting? Or are you asking for action on something? Because to the extent that you would ask me earlier this year to prepare a resolution to create such a committee, I don't know that everyone has a copy of the resolution you're referring to, so they don't necessarily know exactly what it is you're trying to have happen. So you could ask for a resolution this evening to create, to ask it to be placed on the agenda so it can be considered for next meeting, or you can ask them to act on a resolution that you're handing out presently.
If I may ask a question? Is a, is a committee the only?
Need a second.
Currently, you've got a motion. I was just stepping in to make sure I understood what the nature of the request was for the mayor. I believe Councilman Collins, you're still...
We'll go with the first one and say, what, you know, to put it, you put it on the next...
So you're making a motion, place this resolution on the next, on the agenda for next meeting?
Right.
Okay.
And then we would need a second, if there was any.
And then the matter would be open for discussion on the next meeting?
Correct.
Well, then you would have a vote on whether or not it's going to be on the agenda. You could have a discussion following the second on whether or not you think it should be on the agenda, and then you'll ultimately have a vote, and when that vote is tallied, you'll know whether or not it's going to be on your next agenda.
Okay, you guys moving really quick for me tonight? So if you can just tell me if I have a question, when I can ask it, just give me a heads up.
That's what your question is.
Peter, don't we need a second to have a discussion?
You'll need a second before a discussion on whether or not you're going to add it onto the agenda.
We don't, we don't have a second yet to have a discussion.
Yep, I understand. We're discussing whether or not we're going to discuss it, so it isn't really the discussion.
So my second would give us the motion to discuss this?
Yes.
I'll second it, then, let's discuss.
Thank you. Now, is there any questions or comments?
Yes. So I would feel that it would be highly inappropriate to vote on this for a couple of reasons. First, I haven't read this.
Well, I think, Councilwoman Payne, I think that the motion is to add that resolution onto the agenda for next meeting.
So, leading to my second question?
Sure.
Is, that's not how, that's not what our process is, in order to put things on the agenda. So I guess my question is, why is this being treated differently than other agenda items?
Because if a group of council people want to see something placed on the agenda, they can do that. Currently, the ability to add something to the agenda is with the person who presides over the creation of the agenda, which I believe is presently Council President Zambranah, so...
Correct.
Correct. And I've been requesting that since February 13th.
So I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't understand how establishing a subcommittee will lead to whatever the resolution that you think is appropriate with regard to the firehouse. to the firehouse. So just if you could explain to me, you know, why we need a subcommittee for the firehouse issue. I just don't understand.
And I know you haven't read the resolution that Peter prepared in February. So it's just a couple of quick notes. So it shall be considered, recommended, "How to best dispose of the Mount and South Main Street Firehouse and Cottage Ave. Firehouse properties, including consideration of the following issues: What specific parcels compromise Main Street Firehouse and Cottage Ave. Firehouse, and what are the parameters for each parcel? Whether one or both firehouses should be sold or leased? Whether the borough owner owns a property or adjacent to the South Main Street Firehouses to be included in the sale of the lease or lease, either through subdivision or an existing, and whether the restrictions should be placed on the sale and/or lease of the South Main Street and Cottage Ave. Firehouses?" So basically, it's just to try to move something along to figure out, because I know it's been in decay for quite some time now, since the both fire departments have been in the main building at the DPW yard now, in the new firehouse. So it's just, you know, the buildings aren't getting any newer. There's been a lot of decay and water infiltration into the firehouses.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate your response. And I think that all those things that you're mentioning, that I think that there's probably a more streamlined approach, right? You know, in terms of having council discussion and getting to the right result, you know, so that I'm not necessarily opposed to looking at the firehouse situation because I agree with you. I think it's overdue. But I think that establishing a subcommittee sometimes, well, you know, things stall in committee, right? So there probably is a more streamlined approach. You know, Peter, can you make a suggestion as to how to streamline this without having to give it to a subcommittee?
I think at this point, you're really kind of asking me to pick a side, so to speak.
No, no, I'm not. I really not.
Certainly, the council has the ability to take action with respect to this property in any way it sees fit. I think you need to look at the issues which are set forth in the resolution to figure out how you want to resolve those issues. Currently, the parcel that the South Main Street Firehouse sits on is about the width of that building. The parking that is adjacent there too is associated with the property on which the historical society is located. So in order to sell that property, if there's a desire for someone to try to renovate that site in lieu of demolishing and rebuilding something else, you would need to perhaps either subdivide or provide an easement. So those are the types of things you need to see.
Right. And that's what I meant. I was certainly not asking you to pick a side.
Yeah. But I mean, how to streamline it? I mean, the council would need to decide it wants to take action and figure out what it wants to do.
Right. So like, all I was asking what, you know, because I don't have experiences in buying and selling firehouses. You know, so what is the, what is the first step? And so if we can just come to some agreement, the council, right, in terms of what is that next step, in terms of?
But I think, I think the first step has already been taken, and that was taken when the South Main Street rehab plan was created.
Right.
That's, that was the first step.
Right.
And I can't sit here and tell anyone in these chambers why that didn't, nothing happened last year. Nothing happened last year. Don't know why. But as I said, I've said before, I think we've got enough talent on the finance committee and our professionals with our QPA. We didn't have a QPA for four months last year, to structure and advertise a request for bids, based on, hey, by the way, here's what we have now, here's what we possibly can do, you know, open to negotiation, and then we move forward.
Right.
So, you know, if you, if you allow a subcommittee to be formed, we could be here next year discussing what we let another year go by. I don't think we need that.
I respectfully disagree because it's been like this for four to six years already, and nothing has been done. And you were actually on council all that time.
That ordinance was passed at the end of '23. And again, if it was so important, what happened to it last year? There really wasn't. Nothing happened last year.
Nothing happened last year.
There's a lot of nothing.
It was the Republicans did last year, right?
And you can, you can see, I tried to put it on in February and still nothing happened.
The problem is you want to be the chairperson of this subcommittee.
That's because I am going to look at it from both sides. I'm not one way or the other about party lines or anything. I'm trying to look out for the best interest of Milltown.
I understand, but you want to, you want to reset.
And the two firehouses.
You want to reset the plan. What you want to do is go back. You have Councilman Collins who complains that $30,000 was spent on a plan, right? But now you want to, you have a plan, and we have a QPA, and we've got the talent on finance. We've got the talent with our professionals, right? All we need to do is send out an RFP. We don't need to sit down.
So we're going to send more money to figure out that we're not going to do anything with the firehouse?
We kind of already know. The whole focal point of the South Main Street rehab plan was the firehouse. And to open up everything that's around the firehouse. The focal point has always been the firehouse, whatever we decide to do there.
If I may, I have a question. It was, because I kind of agree that, yes, we need to do something. We need to move, we need to move these things. Period. And as, I kind of get the feeling that a lot of the council agrees that these things should be, we should do something with them. And I do feel that that's been there for a while.
It's an asset.
Now, regarding the first, that first part, which says letter A, right? And I thank you, Mr. Njol, for explaining what that concern is about the narrowness of that. To me, it seems a backward chicken before the egg, or egg before the chicken, depending on your word. If we decide how we want to make it, so that we're going to put it out for bid, and we're going to expand the parking on this side, well, maybe we should just take into consideration offers to come in. Can we post it? Give us an idea of what people want of that place. And then if we need to make a change into the way it is zoned, or parceled, or any of that, that could be done to accommodate.
Based on the interest.
Based on the interest, which also then, but once we know what the interest is, that could also lead us to a greater answer on restrictions placed on the sale and/or lease. I mean, all these things are kind of contingent on what people want to do. If we can't, we can either tell people, this is what we want it to be, who wants to do that, and hope that somebody wants to do that, or we have people say, this is what I'd like to do. Can you guys, are you guys amenable to that? Amenable, whatever the word would be, you know?
Which is fine.
But that's, and what I'm more wondering is that, is, if the committee is created and the committee is there to decide that, in the time that it takes for the committee to come up with those plans, then those plans have to be met by the public and greeted well or unwell. Whereas, is there, is there just a shorter way to going about and getting what people want to do with that? Getting requests for it? Having that done in a public forum?
I think you've already done that. So that was, that was the purpose of the South Main Street.
Rehab plan.
Rehab plan was that. Now, you may not have done that with the Cottage Ave. Firehouse. So to the extent that the Cottage Ave. Firehouse is a different animal, you know, you may have to take other things into consideration because it's, I don't know what zoning. It's probably zoned for a governmental use. But part of the reason why the South Main Street rehab study was done was because there's a large area there around the firehouse, and you had to look to decide what to do with the firehouse property because it needed to be rezoned. You had a number of public meetings. The public came out. It was actually, they were very well attended. Mr. Barry and his firm prepared a plan for how to utilize three different sites, specifically, and then some general regulations for the remainder of the area. And those sites were the old heritage site across from, at the end of Coolthaw, the firehouse site, and then the old spirits of Milltown site down closer to Washington Avenue. They all have site-specific standards for those areas and uses that would be contemplated by that plan. And so that first step was already done. Now it's a question of, you own the property, you need to sell the property, you need to figure out what the parameters are going to be when you sell the property.
We need to advertise it. We need to send up.
We need to figure out what it's worth.
Request for proposals. That's what we need to do. And my thought, my fear is that you set up a subcommittee, okay, and you're going to have like two council members of different parties, a member of historical society, a member of revitalization committee, you know, and two other individuals of the borough. Well, all those people were already included in the South Main Street plan in 2023. So for me, it's like you're going back and starting all over again. And my goal would be to get something out the door before the end of the year, in terms of a proposal. I think we can do that. I think the finance committee, we have enough talent. I think with our professionals, we can do that. I don't think we need to start all over again. That's my, that's my, that's my problem.
I mean, yeah, we should be making it a priority, if we all agree it's a priority.
Should have been a priority five years ago, four years ago.
No, I mean, I agree with that, and I just can't, we can't retroactively push that.
The plan, the plan wasn't put in as an ordinance until 2023. Again, it was adopted at the end of 2023. What happened last year? How come all of a sudden this is like the most important thing? Lots of stuff didn't happen last year. We didn't have a QPA. It's a total turnaround this year, okay? Things were in a good place. We have a QPA. We've got the talent on finance. We've got the talent on the professionals right here. All we have to do is send out a proposal. That's all we have to do. And wait for it to come back and see what we want to do. Do we want to sell it? Do we want to lease it? Whatever, whatever we want to do. Whatever's in the best interest of the town. That's, that's how I look at it. I don't think we need to set up a subcommittee.
And we also had a, two other subcommittees that we did for the substation, which that went very well, and for the firehouse. For the DPW yard, there were both subcommittees that both went well. The design perspective of it went well, and it went very quickly. The electrical substation subcommittee did a fine job with that.
I agree.
So subcommittees do work.
Some subcommittees do work. Sometimes, subcommittees, when they're created, sometimes it's where good ideas go to die.
Yeah. I mean, my thought is, I mean, we could always use the public input, maybe, you know?
We did that, right?
There's probably, so, well, we, we kind of did that with the planner, but putting those little sticky dots on where you think we should go where.
Councilman, we did it. We did it with residents. We did it with residents.
Yeah, I know, but the residents can't tell a property owner what they're doing to his property. That's in the Constitution.
The problem is that nothing happened last year because of the nature of the council. That's what, that's what the problem is. So now it's not.
I don't see what the nature of the council does to do it.
Well, because, because nothing got done last year. So, so.
Nothing got done this year.
Let's get it done.
No, no, actually, the reason why nothing happened with me last year is because I lost my mother and my father. That's the reason why I didn't push this in '24. And I pushed it in '25.
Mayor, this is not a personal attack. All I'm saying is that, as a citizen, I observe, no, it's not. And is it appropriate for you to even bring that up? That's not even the issue. As a citizen, I watched. Nothing happened.
It's not appropriate to be political here, and we are being political right here. Yes, there are two parties, and we're being political about last year. And I participated last year. I was Republican last year.
Well, I would like to respond, Garrett, please. I would like to respond to the man. So I watched as a citizen last year that everything was halted and nothing got done. So I'm new to this council. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that something should be done about the firehouse. Let's get it done. Let's get it done.
Let me ask one more question. It would be, if we set up, we're into October. If we set up a committee, does reorg, that happens in January, have to restart or reboot a committee that has been, or is that, committee can be independent?
I will openly admit, I do not recall what the parameters of that committee are because I drafted that resolution in February. And I apologize, but I didn't know we were going to be talking about it tonight. So to the extent you would like to create a committee, you can create a committee with whatever parameters you want. I would leave this was just an attempt by the mayor to try to bring the issue to the forefront and try to get something moved along. So to the extent he did that, it's a resolution, and it will be, you know, the question is a firehouse committee resolution. If you guys want to see that on an agenda, you can ask for that to be. You'll vote in favor of the pending motion. If you don't think it's necessary, you can vote against it. And the form of the resolution will be whatever you guys decide you want to adopt next meeting, assuming that you decide you want to go forward with it. Otherwise, it'll be for the council to decide how it wants to try to move this issue forward, you know, without the need of a committee. That's what we got.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Zambrano?
What are we voting on?
The resolution. Whether or not you're going to add a resolution to the next agenda for a firehouse subcommittee.
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Manco?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Mr. Postonansky?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
No.
Mayor, there's a tie?
Yes.
Way to cause the leg. Way to cause the leg.
So, thank you, everyone, for voting on that. I would also like to bring up another one. That, this one is actually about the Boy Scouts and doing a service project that's been out there since April and still hasn't been put on the agenda. So if I can have a vote in a second, we're putting this one on the agenda for consideration for having a Boy Scout service project to rehabilitate the entrance of the police department as they request it.
I'll make the motion.
Second. May I ask why this needs to be a resolution?
Because I've been asking.
No, 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 but.
No, why doesn't it?
Why does it need to be a resolution?
Why, yes, for it to be approved, but.
But your question did, but that's not the answer to why it needs to be a resolution. Not because you've asked, but what's the reason for having a resolution and not just getting it?
If we could have it approved, I would love to have it approved.
Well, I think, well, to come to a vote.
That's what I'm saying.
Because we, I don't know what I'm voting on. That's, that's the problem. Right now, I believe the mayor is making a motion to try to have a resolution added to next meeting in order to allow a Boy Scout service project to rehabilitate the entrance to the police station.
Yes.
And so to the extent that you don't understand what the parameters of that are, you don't have the resolution. So I think that's why he's asking for that. At least he was one step closer with this subject. I have no idea what I'm going to.
It was basically the, the document that I had last meeting was the pictures, the requests from the police chief, and the documentation about the voice, the chief reached out to Boy Scouts about rehabbing the flagpole area for the police station.
So, so.
Cleaning that up. And then, you know, I brought that up last meeting, and it was just about seeking approval to do that. Because you need borough council approval for any scouting organization to do anything on borough property. So that's all that was.
So I don't think that the chief reached out. That's, that's a problem.
That's right. The chief did not reach out.
The chief did not reach out.
Yes, he did.
So you're calling the police chief a liar?
No, I'm not saying that. He approved, we discussed it, and he approved.
No, he did not.
His signature was right on the sheet.
He did not approach anyone. And we have the documentation to show you. Right? We've been through this already.
Okay. So may I have a vote, please? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano?
Aye.
Council McCollins?
I'd be a bad politician if I didn't vote yes. Aye.
Councilman Manco?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye for the Boy Scouts.
Councilman Postonansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
And aye for the Boy Scouts as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next part of our meeting is open to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any new business to bring before council?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's good. So I just wanted to just reiterate the message from the chief with regard to Ryder's Lane being closed and the traffic, you know, so give yourselves plenty of extra time as you're traveling around town, because there's going to be some backups because of that closure is pretty significant on Ryder's Lane. So just a reminder, give yourself enough time as you're traveling on our roads. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I'd just like to reiterate the fact that we have Ryder's Lane closed, Tyse's Lane closed, and Renee Road closed, which I found out today, unfortunately. So it's going to be very difficult to do maneuvering outside of Route 18 and Milltown Road, so, Main Street, Milltown, so. Good luck.
Washington and Main Street will probably be good luck for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So please give yourself like.
And Wednesday midday, there will be a fire department per session, traveling through Milltown as well, so be mindful of that. Is there any more new business? Okay. Public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their concerns or comments. Well, the council, the council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of our meeting shall be limited to a five-minute period, and may, after others have finished speaking, may be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment for the, for the participants? It comes from our last meeting, if I hope people remember. We had a situation where a resident burst through the door, the chamber doors, running up and chastising council members. There are two things. We have a code of conduct for council members, and that extends to the residents.
Mr. Postonansky, that's council comment. Mr. Posnansky, that's council comments.
I wanted this to proceed, people coming up, because of what happened last meeting. That, that's why I wanted to ask for permission for you to speak about this.
No, he looks like, well, he's giggling, so he's in pretty good shape. He's not upset.
And, and the door, and the door's open.
And the door's open this time.
You know, considering the-
Okay.
Do you want me to proceed, you know? Okay. But we have a code of conduct for council members that extends to the residents. I don't expect trouble from you, sir. Desiring to speak in this room, and two, with, with, with all the political violence in our country right now, we up here deserve to be protected. Again, I, I don't expect trouble, but i- if, if people violate the forum, you may forfeit your right to speak, and you may be asked to leave. Thank you.
No pressure.
No pressure. They're still giggling, so.
One intro.
Good evening. Steve Iola, Seventeen, the Bonus Drive.
Thank you.
I mean, really, the reason I came today was to discuss the rates of the water in the sewer, especially the sewer. My water bill for the three months of, from June to September was eighteen hundred dollars, right? And I didn't want to just come up here and complain. I wanted to do a little bit of research, call different towns, see how they did things, and they were very open to the discussion with me. I spoke, the first town I spoke to was Milltown, was Bridgewater. Bridgewater charges a flat fee of five hundred and thirty dollars for the year. I paid almost twelve hundred dollars in three months for sewer. I just don't think that that's financially sustainable to continue to pay these exorbitant rates for water and sewer. I called Lower Township, and the same thing. They charge four hundred and ninety-nine dollar flat fee for sewer regardless of how much water you use. I called Woodbridge Township, and under forty-nine thousand gallons, they would charge you three hundred and eighty-four dollars for the year. Once you exceed fifty thousand gallons, they charge you point eight, point zero zero eight-eight cents a gallon. And that seemed to be the same for a few other towns that I had spoken to. The interesting town was Monroe, because I think on Milltown's bill, at our top tier for sewer, for a thousand gallons, we're charging twenty-four fifty. Monroe's top tier under, over twenty-four, twenty thousand gallons was a dollar fifteen. So, we're twenty-four times more expensive sewer than we, Monroe. And even, everybody's water rates were lower, but this was the first time my sewer bill was more expensive than my water bill. My water bill was six hundred and thirty dollars, my sewer bill was almost twelve hundred dollars. Now, I think part of that issue is I have irrigation. And I know I've, I've spoken to a few people, we've had conversations, how do we handle irrigation in this town? It's not going into the sewer. Other towns gave a beautification tax credit, some towns made it easy on themselves and just did a kind of an algorithm based on the seasons and how, you know, what the water usage during the summer as opposed to other months. And obviously, some towns, you can put in a separate water meter for irrigation, and then they would send you a bill just for water and not for sewer based on that. I just don't know how sustainable it is to continue to pay a water bill, and a sewer bill that's almost two thousand dollars for three months. Got children that are going to go to college soon, bills to pay, this just, this was the first time I really was concerned of how viable it is to live in Milltown with these utility rates. And I know from people that I'm friends with who were buying homes in the past few years, they were getting concerned that Milltown was getting too expensive, and wound up not buying in Milltown, which is also concerning, that we're getting a reputation of having utilities and being a very expensive town to live in. So, I think, and I don't, I guess my question is, how can we relook at sewer, relook at water, make it more viable, make it more fiscally responsible for the residents of Milltown so that we're not getting clobbered? That's number one. And then I think number two is, how can we address people who use irrigation? How can we alleviate this pain point? I think, obviously, I paid more because of my irrigation. But I know neighbors who will no longer turn on their irrigation and their lawn dies. And then at the end of the season, they rip it all out, they reseed it, they run irrigation for two weeks and they have a lawn. I would prefer not to do that. I'd prefer to come home, have a nice lawn, have, you know, make sure my neighbors are happy with the way my house looks. So, I think that's my concern, and that's my question right now, is how can we get some of these rates under control so that, moving forward, we're not paying these outrageous water bills and sewer bills? That's it. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Have you compared your, your bills from this year to years before? How long have you lived here?
Fifteen years.
So, like, have you checked?
Yes, last, it, it, the nice thing about the smart meters is now, when, when I spoke to the tax collector, she told me exactly where my water rate. She said, between 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM is when you're using your water, and that's exactly how I have my irrigation set up. And the irrigation is set up the same way each year. So, when I spoke to the tax collector, she said, your rate, your water usage is almost identical year over year. I mean, and it was still outrageous last year, it was still maybe twelve hundred or thirteen hundred, but now we're at eighteen hundred, right? It's dramatically going up compared to a town that just gives you a flat sewer rate of five hundred and thirty dollars, right? So, again, I don't know. Like, I don't know what the best way. I do have a rain sensor to try and, you know, stop my irrigation running when the days it rains, but according to the tax collector, it's been pretty similar, my water usage year over year.
So, so, the amount that you use this year is probably the amount you've used last year in your past, past years?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You're aware that we did have to raise the, the rates last year?
Yes, I, I'm aware, but-
Yeah.
Last year, at the top tier, it was eight dollars for, for sewer. This year, it's twenty-four per thousand gallons. But like I said, Monroe's top tier per thousand gallons is a dollar fifteen. So, it's twenty-four times that of Monroe, and much higher than just doing a flat rate. Now, I guess it's because our, our water and sewer isn't privatized, and we're, we're stuck doing all the repairs and all, all that ourselves, so, but I just, you know, that was just my comment. If any way we could take a look at this again and figure out how we could help the residents not feel this pain.
Sure. Well, I, I, and I know that we all feel for you, because we lived here, so.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Seeing none, or closed audience comments? Oh, maybe not.
I, well, like I said, I think I would like to figure out whether we could, um, sorry, whether we could somehow figure out the irrigation. My wife just reminded me. Whether we, whether it's, like I said earlier, whether it's an algorithm we can figure out, or if we do put a water meter in, because I know I've asked that before, and people weren't sure whether doing that would resolve the issue, so.
Thank you. Closed audience comments? Does any member of council have any comments?
I do. Well, I wish we could do better with the water. Some of the things are just the litany of decades before us, a hundred-year-old system, a lot of things that I heard when I first came on councils, sometimes the cake is already baked, and not a great answer, but an answer that I've come to see the reality of. And, you know, if, if we can come up with something, that would be great, but I really don't know what it would be. The other thing would be that, I'm not exactly crazy about a subcommittee, because I do feel that subcommittees are not quite the way to fast-track things. And I am a man who tasked in this role will say that I will take the safe bet if it guarantees me and the town a resolution. But I would love to come to my next council meeting and get another option for something that is a fast-track plan, that says this, 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 and we should be able to do this by X date, and I could go, all right, I'll give that a try. So, you know, in, in this is what is, what I'm offered, you know, I'll go with the, I'll certainly listen to and vote on and consider having a subcommittee, but if there's something that we could do that does things quicker, that does things better, I'm, you know, certainly open to hearing that, and, you know, we love options. Milltown, historically, is not fast when it comes to enacting on many levels. And that's, that's a long-term thing. It's not even, that's not a this year, the last year, or that's just history, which I don't like to go too deep into history, because I'd like to, really like to take tomorrow one much better than I'd like to talk about yesterday. I'm very sorry for the town and our fire department's loss. That'll be it.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to do quick ones. So, for folks who are watching tonight, or will watch it later tomorrow, there will be in council chambers here a special Ford Avenue meeting at seven o'clock. Don't know if it's going to be televised or not, but if you're interested, we will be here at seven o'clock for that special Ford Avenue meeting. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, after Saturday's great Milltown Day, it was a great day, because it didn't rain and it wasn't windy. That was really why it was a great day. But I'd actually like to thank each of the revitalization team members who, without, without any of them, none of that would have happened. Andrew Van Deveer, the chair, Bonnie Jasko, Dave Raniac, Rachel Freed, Sue Olin. Would be remiss in not mentioning the DPW and the Rec Department. None of this would have happened without them. The, our first responders, our, our fire department, you know, our police department who were there, and to all our sponsors. I still have not recovered. Maybe in the next couple of days I will. But that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, thanks. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and on behalf of the council and the mayor, that we want to extend our condolences to the family of Tony Korbincheck, the deputy chief, who recently passed away, and our condolences to the Fire Department as they are in mourning. And, you know, they're a wonderful group of people, and Tony leaves a big hole. And, you know, our firefighters will come together and make sure that hole gets filled, but it'll be, it'll be a tough task to do that. So, I just wanted to acknowledge Tony, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for including him in the moment of silence today. I appreciate that.
Pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Somewhere in here, we used to read council reports, but I guess we changed the agenda again.
No, sir. No, sir. In strictly accordance with Rules of Council passed by the sixth of January of this year, council reports are only on the first meeting of the month.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, sir. If you look at, if you look in your dais, you'll see, you'll see a copy of the Rules of Council passed by council.
But, but is the change now, because council comments are back? Is that why? To shorten the-
No, sir. We placed, we, if you look at your agenda and compare that to the Rules of Council passed on the sixth of January, you'll see it's verbatim as passed by the Rules of Council.
But, but you've been the business administrator, and you've let us go on every month with, with our reports. Why?
I guess we'll turn the record on.
You only did it at the first, you only, you only did reports at the first meeting of the month.
But why have we been doing reports every month, then?
You did it during, you did it during, you, you spoke during council comments, not reports.
No, I'm, I'm saying, we've done reports every meeting, now we don't.
I guess we'll turn the music on.
That's what I meant, I'm asking that.
So, the, the question is, you objected to one change, but you don't want to follow the rules of your own rules.
Oh, no, wait, wait, excuse me.
If you give, if you give council reports during both times of the meeting, okay, in violation of your own rules, sir, that you spoke about last time, let me finish, let me finish, then you may speak one at a time. Thank you, sir. If you guys want to talk during council comments, we don't care. I don't care what you say. It's your comment. It's council comments. You can say anything you want. But by the Rules of Council, reports, department head reports, are only given once a month.
But we have not followed that, and you've been here-
Yes, sir, you have not followed it.
We have not followed-
It's not my job to correct you, sir. It's not my job to correct the council on the dais if you don't follow your own rule.
But now you want to follow those rules, because council comments are back, correct?
No, sir, you want to follow the rules. You want to follow the rules, sir, that's why we put it back. You objected to the change. We put it back the way you want it. It's exactly the way the council passed it on the sixth of January, verbatim. You're listed at number eighteen, Agenda Session. That Agenda Session has not been on this council agenda this year.
Sir, I, I-
Make up your mind. Make up your mind, sir. You can't have it both ways.
We are following this to the letter, then.
To the letter, sir, verbatim.
To the letter, to the letter. But, but now it's important to do that, correct?
No, sir, it's important to do it.
Yes, it is important to me.
That's why we changed it back. It's verbatim, the way you wanted it, sixth January, there it is.
You certainly like jousting with me.
Sir, you started the fight, not me. I got nothing else to do.
I'm not starting a fight.
I got nothing else to do.
Let's take a breath, guys.
Let me get out of here.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just also like to express my condolences to the fire company and the Korbincheck family with the loss of Tony. He was a good man, and I spoke to him at his son's services, and he was a, he was a really down-to-earth guy, and I'm really going to miss him.
I'd, I'd like to speak if no one else is. I have two things, and I'm also going to honor the deputy chief. The one is, in regards to the firehouse, because I didn't know we were going to speak about that tonight, so I will proceed. The importance of a resolution for the borough is to be beneficial, beneficially impactful to the residents and taxpayers. Last meeting, we had Resolution 2025-307, NJ Real, in support of New Jersey protection against climate threats, resilient environments, and landscape rules. I asked questions regarding Milltown's obligations, penalties, and onus in regards to the regulations involved. The answers I received were inconclusive, except upon reading more, much is expected of us in the future if we voted for the resolution, which we did, and I did. A resolution is of major importance to the residents of a community for their benefit or it is not brought up. A resident came to the meeting upset that the firehouses had not been sold. I asked for evaluation of the sites, considering that if sold, it would ease the tax burden of struggling residents. They already have been shouldering the taxes at the site of the old Michelin plant, amounting to seven million dollars. We need to have a resolution, or at least a discussion, to form a committee guided by the mayor to come to an agreement on the disposition of the sites for the beneficial, financial benefit of Milltown. If we can have a resolution on climate change, the rising of the oceans, and expected by some of cataclysmic events, supported by a few, all of which have differing opinions, surely we can put up a resolution to support having open and honest discussion on plans for our firehouses. We owe that to over, the overburdened taxpayers. I brought up the disposition of the firehouses before, and nothing's ever come, there was never a discussion except my voice, and thank you. And I'm going to talk about the deputy chief. I am honoring one of our very brightest of lights, the true pillar of our community, Tony Korbincheck. Tony has left us in body, but his spirit, the love of his family, Milltown, and his beloved Fire Department family, lives on. He was a devoted father, husband, mentor, or more appropriately, a brother, father, and grandfather figure to our wonderful firefighters. To them, I hope when the sadness passes, that they remember Tony with a smile. I knew Tony for a short while. I will surely miss him and the long talks we had. Godspeed, Tony. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just have a few things. At a special meeting held on September 18th, the planning board determined that the Ford Avenue redevelopment plan is consistent with the borough's master plan in accordance to ordinance 251573. is consistent with the borough's master plan in accordance to ordinance 251573. The Rec Advisory Committee held a special meeting on September 25th, attended by Councilman Manco, Councilman Collins, and myself, and the information discussed will be included in my report in the next meeting. Sincere thank you to Andrea Vandevere, Council President Zambrana, and the entire revitalization committee for organizing an outstanding Milltown Day. And finally, as reflected in Councilwoman Payne's remarks, our thoughts and prayers are with Chief Korbincheck's family and the Milltown Fire Department. May his legacy continue to inspire us, and may his family and fellow firefighters find comfort in the support of the community he served so faithfully. And Mr. Manick concludes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to have it enter into executive session. Is that what you wanted, Peter?
Essentially, I would need, you'd ask if the council wants to move that resolution. So, the resolution's prepared, so you could ask if there's some, ask that it be read by title, I guess. It would be, if there is a title on it.
Resolution 2025-327, entering into executive session.
Perfect.
So, whoop.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manco?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, ma'am.
Thank you. Take five minutes.
So, we're going to have executive session?